Welcome to the 2022 November meeting of the Board of Trustees at the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. As we've done every meeting for the last year or so, I'd like to welcome Karina Makalusa, who will lead us in the singing of the National Anthem. If you would, please rise.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
I want to thank Karina, who is a junior majoring in music, and she has a minor in speech, communication, and hearing from Asheville, North Carolina. Really appreciate you coming and leading us in the National Anthem. It's a great thing to start off the meeting with a star student to remind us of why we're here. So, thank you very much. Okay. At this time, I'll call on Secretary Malcolm Turner for a roll call.
Ms. Artis Neal?
Here.
Mr. Bullock?
Here.
Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Codis?
Here.
Mr. McCullen?
Present.
Mr. Meekins?
Present.
Mr. Patel?
Here.
Mr. Pryor?
Present.
Ms. White?
Here.
Ms. Van?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, where are the corners?
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. As Chair of the Board of Trustees, it is my responsibility to remind all members of the Board of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest as required by this act. Each member has received the agenda and related information for this Board of Trustees meeting. Any Board member knows of any conflict of interest or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the Board of Trustees at this meeting, the conflict or appearance of conflict should be identified at this time. Anyone on the Board see anything on the agenda or know of anything coming up that they feel like they have a conflict on? Great. This time, I would ask Board members if they would review the materials listed under the consent agenda. Those include approval of open and closed session minutes from the September 29th and 30th, 2022 meeting, approval of the transfer of University of Endowment's distribution from the investment fund, approval of the annual endowment fund report, advanced planning spending authority for the genetic medicine building first floor renovation, designer selection, Hamilton Hall, the HVAC renovation, property acquisition by lease for the psychiatry department, believe that Mr. Merklin said that was for research purposes, ratification of Tier 2 SAAO appointments, approval of non-salary and deferred compensation policy changes, and approval of School of Social Work faculty salary ranges. So, I move approval of the consent agenda and would ask for a second to the motion. Have a second from Trustee Davis. Give Board members a chance to review those. Okay, is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. The consent agenda is approved. We do have an update to policy on naming university facilities and units, and I would at this time call on the Provost of the University, Dr. Chris Clemens.
I think it's been updated since your book, so Chris will pass out an update. And I could have one so I don't refer to the wrong. Thank you. This is a minor technical correction to an existing Board of Trustees policy. You own the policy. We have some suggested language after working with a couple of you, especially Gene Davis. Thank you, Gene. Let me just tell you the intent. The policy on naming facilities and units includes outdoor memorials and markers. This will allow memorials and markers for significant historical events consistent with recent practice, so it's updating the policy to follow recent practice and allowing in the future considerations that we would have for significant historical events, markers on campus. It's very light touch to the language. If you look at what's changed since you last saw it, you can see, I'll just walk you through a little if you're interested. In the first document, that's the policy itself. You can see the highlighted language under A. Permanent outdoor memorials may memorialize significant events in the university's history. So, that's the new possibility. And then you can see that requires a change under naming facilities in B, where it says "or university historical events." So, that's the only two changes now to that policy in those two places. Equally important is the procedure, which you should have a copy of. That's the smaller document. And you can see added at the top, memorials and markers to honor persons or organizations or to commemorate significant events. And then you can see we've added under eligibility. The Board will ultimately judge on the significance and whether it rises to the standard you set for a significant historical event. And then you can see a few changes to language to allow events. This policy does not contemplate naming buildings or other things after historical events. It's only historical markers, so it only applies to memorials in the form of a marker. I'm happy to take any questions about that.
Any questions?
I just want to make sure-
Trustee Artis Neal?
That I follow. So, we're on the process one. Under Section 1 eligibility, the new language says the eligibility of significant historical events for memorialization shall be determined by their significance. There doesn't reference who is doing the determining. Is that implied to be the committee itself? I noticed that language was removed.
Yeah, so you're talking about the committee that would send this to you. They would, we, in the eligibility language, all of the prior language that's there is setting the terms for eligibility, not the, you know, not the process for who finally decides. All of this is BOT decision.
Okay.
So, what you would be judging on, in the case of the language that was already there, is whether someone's contribution is sustained and substantial. So, you've always done that and made a determination on whether a person has made the sustained and substantial contribution. Now, you would be determining on whether a particular event that someone wants to memorialize is significant enough to warrant a memorial.
And that, you're saying, that is now done by the trustees? Because before, the reference was to the Chancellor's Advisory Committee. That struck.
Yeah, so that was, that was a bad language. That was never in the policy. That was our first proposal. Gene Davis pointed out that that's not appropriate for a policy where you have the ultimate authority, so we changed it yesterday.
Okay.
And that's why you have a new version.
So, I have a motion to approve the changes. Do I have a second? Hold on. I have a second and discussion. Trustee Curtis.
Just a few years ago, we were dealing with a marker that caused an awful lot of problems on campus, and I want to make sure that we don't create markers that are going to become rallying points for various groups to come onto campus and create division or potentially cause violence. So, I think we need to be extremely careful and language should be considered, or why we're doing all of this should be considered. We're not a museum in a lot of ways. We are here to provide the benefits of the university to the people of the state, and I just want to make sure that we stay true to that kind of core educational mission and protecting our students and not focus on creating various places that could be a problem. So, I think there could be further refinement to the language to make sure that we kind of stay out of that lane. Doesn't have to be done now, but at some point.
Mr. Chancellor.
I think that you're making a good point, and I'm wondering if something to be added is that this is true to the mission of the university. I am a professor there. Are we at that eligibility? Do you have that? Do you agree with that?
So, what you would recommend is something to the effect of the eligibility of significant historical events for memorialization shall be determined by their significance and shall be determined or judged, or judged based on, consistent with the mission of the university. Trustee Codis, do you have a motion to a friendly amendment to that?
Which you just said, yes.
To add that, to add that language? Okay.
I accept that.
Okay, so, Trustee Davis accepts that as a friendly amendment to the motion. So, we do have a motion and a second to the amended policy changes. Is there any additional discussion? Trustee Codis, I thought that was a good, good point, and, you know, it's nice to memorialize that type of thought process because we're not going to be here forever, and it's great to have that, you know, in the institutional documentation. Okay. Hearing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, great. The ayes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Provost.
Thank you.
And thank you, Trustee Davis, for your work on that. All right, well, good morning, everyone. Again, I've already welcomed everyone. So, last night down the hall, we honored four recipients of the William Davy, William Richardson Davy Award. Reminded everybody that, you know, that award and that night sort of, and the fact that its name for William Richardson Davy reminds us how long, how long this university has been here and what part we play in history. You know, Mr. Davy was actually in the room and was part of the deliberation and discussion about how the United States Congress is, is currently organized, that we have popular representation in the U.S. House of Representatives and two United States Senators per state. He was part of that discussion, and so our university has a heritage that goes back that far. And it's, it's nice to be reminded that our influence as a place continues from that point and as was witnessed Tuesday night in, in the elections of Congress and Senators. At the awards ceremony, we honored the President of the University of Maryland Baltimore County, our own Dr. Valerie Ashby. We honored former Board Chair and active UNC volunteer Lowry, Dr. Lowry Caudle, former trustee and also active UNC alum, Dr. Bill Keyes, and Richard Vindroot, former candidate for North Carolina Governor and former mayor of Charlotte. It was a special night, and I'd like to thank trustee Ally Rae McCullen for his chairmanship of the External Relations Committee that nominated those individuals and for helping make last night a special Carolina event. Thank you, trustee McCullen. The Davy Honorees represent the best among us. They embody the promise that this place, the university of the people, makes to everyone who comes here. And let me say this while I'm at, congratulations and thanking. I want to congratulate, I see Director Cunningham is here, I want to congratulate Coach Karen Shelton and the Tar Heel Field Hockey Team for earning their 25th ACC championship title. They beat, they beat the Virginia Cavaliers last week, and this is the sixth title in a row, and Coach Shelton's 25th title while coaching the program. They're 17-0 and are playing tomorrow at noon. Is that right, Director Cunningham, in the NCAA tournament? The UNC women's soccer team plays Saturday on Dorance Field here in Chapel Hill against Old Dominion in the NCAA tournament. I would note that Carolina, the Carolina women's soccer team has appeared in every NCAA tournament to date and is the only program to achieve that feat, and that deserves a round of applause as well. I say that just to remind everyone of this Board and this university's commitment to women's sports and what this university represents in this nation with respect to women's sports. Because, you know, I also got to go see the number one ranked Tar Heel basketball team play this week, so don't want to forget them. And we're eight and one in football, which is, which is in and of itself a bit of a miracle, but we're all happy about that. So, the Tar Heel Bus Tour, which we'll hear about shortly, was a highlight of this past month, and it's an important effort to both take our world-class faculty out to North Carolinians where they, where they are and where they live, and to give citizens also a chance to learn about what we as a university do for this state. I want to thank trustee Ralph Meekins. Trustee Meekins hosted a stop for dinner, and I got to participate in some square dancing with you, trustee Meekins, at Lake Tahoma near Marion, North Carolina. So, trustee Meekins, Ralph, thank you for that. I also had the opportunity in the last couple of weeks to hear trustee Artis Neal at the dedication of the National Pan-Hellenic Council Memorial honoring the Divine Nine, historically Black fraternities and sororities. If you get the chance to be on South Campus just past Morrison Dorm going down toward the Smith Center, please take time to visit that site. It is indeed impressive. Trustee Artis Neal, thank you. I want to also thank trustees Ramsey White and Perrin Jones for spearheading the important work that this Board, along with the administration and Chancellor Guszkewitz, is endeavoring to do on career services. The working group that this Board established at our last meeting is in the final stages of formation and will begin work shortly. We're hoping to have a report with solid recommendations for a new vision for that effort on campus. Thank you, Mr. Chancellor, for that work, and thank you, trustees White and Jones for that. Trustee Vinay Patel is hard at work on the Economic Development Council. We heard about that yesterday. The Board received an update on the innovation hub and efforts to integrate the 100 block of Franklin Street more with the university activity and new businesses that leverage the knowledge produced here at Carolina. Thank you, trustee Patel. I want to thank trustees Gene Davis and Rob Bryan, who have both been working hard on search committees. I know they both serve on the School of Government Search Committee, and trustee Davis, I know, has also been working hard with Dean Martin Brinkley on the design of a proposed new law school, so thank, thank each of you for your work. And while I'm at it, I want to thank Secretary Malcolm Turner for his unique skill set with both the law and athletics and the continued expertise that he's brought to this Board and given to the Chancellor on things happening here on campus. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Last week, the Board had the opportunity to gather in Greensboro for a short retreat. Trustee Marty Codis deserves a special thank you. Marty, thank you for hosting us at the Painted Plate. It was, it was indeed an impressive event, and really, really, really can't thank you enough for, for your hospitality and allowing us to gather in Greensboro offsite out of Chapel Hill and remind us that Chapel Hill's not the only place in North Carolina, but, but it really was. We had the opportunity to learn some things about other universities across the nation and some things they do. We also took a look at some initiatives that the Board is, is working to bring forward as recommendations, for example, on the Program for Public Discourse and our continued efforts to be a national leader on free speech on campus and academic freedom. Michael Poliakoff, President of the American Council of Trustees and Alumni, and Armon Alcibi act as Chief of Staff, brought some fantastic perspective to trustees on being a trustee and what's happening across the country in higher education from a trustee perspective. Chancellor Guszkewitz and trustee Talaja Van were in attendance as well. Talaja, thanks for, I know it's tough as a student, but thank you for taking time out of your week to come and be a part of Board. And Chancellor Guszkewitz, I know you're very busy, but I want to thank you for, for participating and being there. One strong takeaway from that retreat is that Carolina is leading the nation on freedom of speech and academic freedom, and, and we are going to continue that commitment. And of course, our academic reputation remains solid. As you probably read, September of this year, the university held strong and for the fifth consecutive year was ranked the fifth best college among public universities by U.S. News and World Report. But it's important to consider some other details in that ranking. For example, our undergraduate nursing program tied for fifth in the nation. Our undergraduate program in business, which we celebrated the new, the groundbreaking of the addition to the business school, is tied for eighth overall. That's something we can certainly be proud of. And in light of tomorrow honoring our nation's veterans, I want to point out that, that University of North Carolina Chapel Hill was ranked 12th overall for best colleges for veterans. And so, tomorrow, please keep veterans in your thoughts and prayers. This consistency and excellence is this Board of Trustees in partnership with the administration. We've worked hard to maintain a level of excellence, and the work we're doing to shore up our foundation for continued pursuit in that excellence and all that we do will provide an even better future for Carolina. I appreciate the work Board members Codis, Pryor, and Meekins are doing on keeping UNC affordable with the tuition and fees, work that they've done over the last couple of years. Chief Financial Officer Nate Knuffman presented a thorough look at how Carolina's tuition remains one of the lowest in the nation considering the world-class education provided here. UNC Chapel Hill student fees remain the lowest in the UNC system. Two-thirds of graduates of UNC graduate with no student debt, and students who do graduate with debt are, on average, have a debt that is $10,000 less than the average, than the national average. That's something we certainly are and should be proud of. We recently published a report on, and let me, let me add this. One thing that we have done as a Board, and I want to thank trustee White for this and her, her strong work on this, is we've added a tab on the university trustee page, and, and we're going to make regular reports of things that the Board is doing and some highlights to be, continue to be transparent and inform taxpayers of North Carolina students, faculty, and all interested party on things that we're doing. We recently published a report on the September Board. It's titled, and that tab is titled Meeting Reports. This tab provides access to a report from each Board meeting designed to update our most important constituents, and we want people to know the important work we're doing, and we want people to know the important work that the administration is doing as well. So, shortly after each meeting, we're going to provide a report on our priorities and our progress. Our first edition, trustee John Pryor, the Vice Chair, who I was going to thank, but he had, unfortunately, had a business commitment that he had to make this morning. He will be here later this morning, but he reports in that tab on the critical work that we, along with the administration, have done to consolidate and streamline our budgeting process. I encourage all of you to read it and share it with others concerned about the strength and the stability of the university. I think you'll find that we are a strong, we are, we are on strong footing thanks to the hard work of, of the Chancellor, his staff, and the support of this Board. Let me take just a moment also to mention that we did have a moment yesterday with, with respect to the issue on housekeeper pay, and, and was, was very moved to hear from the housekeepers yesterday. I, I want to say that from my perspective, sitting as Chair of the Board and dealing with trustees and working closely with the Chancellor, the Chancellor's team is working really hard to make sure that we address the, the pay issue as related to the classification of housekeepers on campus, and, and it's, 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 you know, it's a shame we don't have at this point a little more flexibility in that line item, but I want to be clear that the Chancellor and his staff have, have talked to this Board and have, and have worked really, really hard to address those pay issues, and they are going to be addressed. And, and we as a Board, every member of this Board, support the efforts of the administration to make, continue to make this place the great place that it is. And, and it's folks like Robin, who was here yesterday, that, that make this place. Our staff and the team that works every day to do things, the housekeeping staff, the grounds team, the maintenance team, the IT crowd, I don't know if Mike Barker here, his crowd. I see the chief is here, you know, our, our, our team at the, at Public Safety. Every member of the staff works really hard to make, and without them, we're just not the, not the place that, you know, they make this place. They really do. They really do. And so, we do support their efforts, the administration's efforts to make that. There, there's nothing this Board has direct authority to do, and if we did, we would do something, but we don't have direct authority to make that happen. But we do support the Chancellor and his efforts. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chancellor, for that. We're doing great work, and we're doing it together. Future of our university is solid, and we have a real opportunity to continue leading in important ways, and we're going to hear about some of that today through the Carolina Bus Tour. So, lest we all forget, and, and I hope he's not sitting there wondering if I forgot, but the campaign for Carolina, Vice Chancellor Ruth, continues to build on six years of momentum. You gave us a report on that, and next week, we'll be here in Chapel Hill, Chapel Hill for the campaign celebration. But even after that, the work will continue, and even after the end of the, of the scheduled campaign. But at this point, I would ask, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Vice Chancellor, will you come to the podium, please?
It's my birthday today, so-
Happy birthday. That's right. Happy birthday.
I can do what I want today on some things.
So, I have a motion for a resolution of appreciation for Vice Chancellor David Ruth, and I'll make this motion, and I'll be seeking a second after I make the full motion, and that is, whereas Carolina alumnus David Ruth is near the completion of his extraordinary term as Vice Chancellor for Development, while the historic campaign for Carolina winds down after surpassing- down after surpassing its original $4.25 billion goal a full year ahead of schedule. And whereas Vice Chancellor Ruth oversaw the eight most successful fundraising years in Carolina history that attracted more than 215,000 loyal alumni and donors and made the campaign for Carolina the top higher education campaign in the history of the South. Whereas Vice Chancellor Ruth also guided Carolina to one of the most successful fundraising campaigns ever in public higher education as one of the top six public campaigns of all time, and helped secure the largest single gift ever to this university. And whereas, under the leadership of Vice Chancellor Ruth, other remarkable results include more than doubling the philanthropic cash support for our campus, while also increasing principal gift fundraising from $7 million annually in fiscal year 2014 to $259 million in fiscal year 2022. And whereas David has championed the creation of One Carolina, a unified approach to fundraising among schools and units to fully tap the expertise of the talented development professionals throughout the university and advance our mission as a leading global public research university. And whereas, the former president of the North Carolina Plan Giving Council has distinguished himself as a nationally recognized leader, becoming the first Chair of the Board of Directors for the Advancement Leadership Lab, founded to develop senior advancement leaders with potential and infuse the industry by inspiring talent and nurturing successful careers. Now, therefore be it resolved that members of the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill thank Chancellor Ruth and express our great appreciation for his devoted leadership, outstanding service that has strengthened our fundraising infrastructure in ways that will have a positive impact on the campus community and the people of North Carolina for years to come. I have a motion to move that by, to approve that by acclamation. Having, having that motion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Vice Chancellor Ruth, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Let me just say, I'm not often speechless. I'm speechless and there's nothing I could say. I'm really grateful. Thank you. Grateful for all the time and service with you. Thank you.
We look forward to coming week as well. Thank you very much. So.
Thank you, Trustee.
Oh, all right. So with that, I guess the only thing I need to say is still a great day to be a Tar Heel, right?
Yes, sir.
ceremony that we have, and she was, it's, it's no Delta Serenade, but it's, but that was good, guys. Thank you. Well, at the break, everybody can come get some. All right. With that, I'm going to call on the student body president and trustee Talaja Van.
Thank you so much. Now, Jean stole my thunder because I was going to tell you happy birthday. Now everyone else already did it. But did want to take a moment to say happy birthday, Dave. I think entering this space is a little scary to start. You never know what you're going into when you enter a new environment. And for me, you have made every part of this experience so seamless. And I just really appreciate all of your support and hope that, you know, you're doing a wonderful job in this spaces chair and leading everybody. Just diving right in, I guess I'll start with things that maybe are not too positive and then work our way down to more positive things. Just lead in the water. Students are still really concerned. I think the university's done a great job of sending out messaging to people, making sure that they know what the university knows. I think that we've done a wonderful job on being transparent with your team, Chancellor Guskowitz, making sure that student government leaders are looped into that conversation as well as other organizational leaders on campus, but making sure the general student body understands what's happening. And still, I think there's just a level of fear that students have that we hope will be able to get assuaged sometime soon as we continue to make progress in addressing these issues. I know that we spoke a bit yesterday or someone gave a presentation about like our HVAC system in Hamilton specifically. And so wanted to talk a little bit about what the experience is like for students who are currently taking classes in some of these buildings. I think something really important to highlight is just the fact that it is so hot. It's so hot on the top floors of Hamilton. It's so hot on the top floor to some of these classrooms in Guy Hall. And so just wanting to make sure that, and obviously I know that it is at the forefront of all of our minds, making sure that when we're thinking about how to improve these spaces, I'm just considering the way that students are showing up in that space right now and wanting to create an environment in which there's not really any barrier save for you being sick or something's really wrong that keeps you from showing up to class. Want to talk to you all about UNC Student Voting Day. I'm not sure if you've heard about it yet. It was a really amazing event that student government put together on Saturday, November 5. That was the last day of the early voting period. And North Carolina is lucky to have like three weeks of early voting. And so students have many opportunities to be able to show up in that space. If I'm not mistaken, we had a wellness day this year during the early voting period. So students had the opportunity to like vote then if they chose to. The student government, that being undergraduate student government, the executive branch, and our legislative branch, as well as our grad and professional student government, all felt that it was our obligation as leaders on our campus to create a space for students to be able to get to the polls that are nearby and just be able to participate in that process any way they wanted to. And we wanted to invite students to just celebrate the ability to show up in that way and to perform our civic duty. So had a lot of cars lined up to like carpool students who were not able to walk or maybe didn't want to to Chapel of the Cross, Chapel Hill Public Library, we had some bus routes set up for people. We marched a lot of students to Chapel of the Cross. We found out at the end of the day, there were many students who didn't know there was like a civic engagement kind of fair happening after just to have a good time. So many of them went straight to Chapel of the Cross and just said, I'm here for UNC Student Voting Day and voted and went home. And so we're really thinking that this will be a moment for just change, for student governments to be at the forefront of getting students on their campus to participate in this way. And we've already seen other campuses across like our Triangle area, but also in some other places following our lead. And so are excited to be at the front of this, just like we're at the front of the league. We talked a little bit at our board retreat about a speaker series that student government is hosting. We had our first speaker maybe a couple of weeks ago. And our next speaker in that series is going to be Wayne Goodwin, and we're really excited for that. As I communicated, the speaker series is a joint effort between the leader of our legislative branch, Christian Phillips, and Vice President Robinson in the executive branch for student government or undergraduate student government. And so Wayne Goodwin is one of Vice President Robinson's speakers, and we're really excited to have him on campus and then to be able to flip again for the next event and have some people that our Senate leadership have chosen to come engage our students. Just speaking to some issues that relate to our grad students, want to communicate on behalf of our grad and professional student government constituency that they appreciate the support of the board and support of many other administrators as we raise graduate student stipends, and also just improve our ability to make UNC a more accessible space to all people in North Carolina. So thank you all for your diligence as always. Really eager at the prospect of creating more of a campus community for undergrad students, for graduate students, finding more ways to just incorporate them into the events and things that QAB posts for students across campus, finding ways to get them out of like maybe a singular academic building. I know if you're a pharmacy student, for example, you don't really have a reason right now to go outside of the pharmacy school. So as we talk about more housing for grad students and just other ways to incorporate them through organizations, we're excited to see that campus community continue to thrive more. I'm excited for a movement just towards a great old fiscal transparency that you, Chancellor Guskowitz, and Nate and Steve have been able to help us facilitate. So want to thank you all for your work on that front. And just emphasize finally that we've got, as you all know, some incredible schools and programs here. And we're just excited to see, I think, things continue to grow and improve as we make some changes like our gen ed curriculum, ICCC, and all those things, and just finding more ways to integrate our grad students into those systems beyond their professional course of study. I think those are sufficient updates for me. Thank you all.
Thank you, President Van and Trustee Van. Always appreciate it. At this time, I'll call on Chancellor Guskowitz for remarks.
There we go. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Bolick. Thank you, President Van. We appreciate the wonderful remarks today. I'm happy to be here. And I want to start off by reiterating our commitment to our house. I remember all the days we raised our commitment to help you sustain on the frontline. Every day, making our campus function, making more weight with the tax for hospital sites, once we raised commitment to this yesterday. We are working closely with our public office and our social resources and, you know, we maintain change. I want to thank the board for their commitment to this. We need to get this afternoon after the meeting and be in working with those various offices and hopefully we will move on and change that. And before I turn my foot, I also want to say a word about David Ruth. David, I hear 10 years ago, began as a senior associate dean for the National Science at that time, had the chance to be on and building out this program. Alongside him, he will always say it's possible to give a pretty large effect that this is a valuable campaign we had in the department for me and for here according to over the past seven, eight years, you know, without the visionary leadership moving on. And as David said, he will always be working for Carolina in January of all years. So thank you. I also want to thank our friends and graduates. It was a really fun evening last night. And Valerie Nash, Lamari Cobb, all of your friends, so many of us who came to your practice. I said, I had a chance to learn from each of them their own way and their own. I'm really honored to be here last night alongside all of you. Speaking of legends, I just want to turn back to University Day. And I've had a few slides here for our bars this afternoon, this morning. It's already been a little late, but we celebrated five distinguished alumni at University Day last month, including Karen Parker, Carolina's first black woman undergrad, alongside Cisco CEO Chuck Robbins, University District Public Health Team, Joyce Bowman, local public practice, she has operations in Paul Pegg, U.S. District Judge for District of Minnesota, Jerry Blackwell, who also had the pleasure of having some keynote speeches around the county long time ago. This was a really special day. I want to thank all of you for your participation. But it was a discussion important day to celebrate our 29th birthday on the 12th of the day. On that day, our researchers shared the impact of their work at the cross state. And it's important to remember that across centuries, our university has all worked together in the state of Carolina, the nation, and the world are better placed. University Day is a wonderful time to look back on our accomplishments and our. Chair Bolick mentioned the great successes we're having on the athletic. Nothing better than a fall afternoon to get out, or a fall afternoon to get out and cross campus. You go hockey game and then jump over to a soccer game. And then the next day, you go to the game for a ballgame.
Is that a little better on the volume? I'll use, I'll use the chair's mic. They turned the volume on his up. There you go. Okay. But nothing better than celebrating our, our incredible student athletes at Carolina. And please, if you can, get out and support these teams that are, you know, in the, the NCAAs right now. And trustee Davis, thank you for acknowledging Fiona Crowley, who won the singles championship at the 2022 ITA Fall National Championship. She's the only, only the second Tar Heel to ever win both ITA Fall major, majors that they have in the same season. So it's quite an accomplishment. And then obviously, you know, we're ranked Carolina's football team first in the ACC and 15th nationally in the AP poll. And we're heading over to Winston-Salem to try to keep, keep it going this weekend. So finally, I want to say a little about the bus tour before I bring some of our colleagues up. And, you know, last month, I had the opportunity to travel alongside 80 faculty members and colleagues on the Tar Heel bus tour. As you know, I talked about bringing the bus tour back, and we did this in the fall of 2019. And unfortunately, because of the pandemic, pandemic, we were not able to, to hold the bus tour the past two years. But we did it in grand fashion this year. And I, I want to thank our Board of Trustees members who were able to join us out there on the tour. We visited communities from Elizabeth City to Marion to see all the ways that our university benefits from its deep roots in North Carolina, and had a chance to see some of the important research and service that our faculty and our staff conduct in communities, especially those communities in need across the state. We had 21 stops in 21 counties covering over 1,000 miles on two buses and saw how Carolina serves the people across the breadth of our state. Just a few highlights. On the east bus, which is where I started, I was able to get on both buses, started on the east bus. We visited First Flight High School in Kitty Hawk and learned about the work of the Carolina Advising Corps. At Somerset Place in Washington County, we learned about North Carolina's Annabelleum plantation economy and the, the way public historians are telling a, a more honest and compelling story of enslaved communities in our state. And then on the west bus, we drove the bus onto the NASCAR track over in North Wilkesboro and learned about the challenges of economic development in the state's small towns and rural regions. And then over at Grandfather Mountain, we learned about Tar Heel legend Hugh Morton's important contributions as an incredibly talented photographer, passionate environmentalist and conservationist. And again, as trustee Bolick said, Chair Bolick said, thank you to trustee Meekins. That was an awful fun time at, over there in Marion on Lake Tahoma, where you hosted us for an evening of fellowship music and square dancing. And it was just a wonderful time to, to spend, spend that time together alongside some of our legislators who were able to join us. At the end of the tour, we had a, a wonderful reflection dinner over at the Botanical Gardens. And I asked each of the participants to share in one word that best described what they felt and what they experienced on the tour. And mine was responsibility. I, I, I really felt the, the sense of responsibility that we have that as the first and of the publics, the most public of the publics, as you often hear me say, that it's our responsibility to serve the people of North Carolina. It's why we do what we do. And I think the bus tour made that responsibility concrete. And yes, there is Vice Chancellor Manguini. She, she tried to fly, she tried to fly that helicopter out of the, that hangar there, but they, they took the keys from her. So, so Lynn Blanchard is going to give you a brief overview of the tour next. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank Lynn Blanchard and Anna Rose Medley for their leadership. This would not have been possible if it were not for their incredible leadership. This is not something you plan in a week or two or three, or a month or two or three. They began planning this about a year ago. And we are grateful for your leadership. We're going to also hear, after Lynn introduces sort of the, the themes and the routes and everything that we did, we've asked two of the bus tour participants to tell their stories. Stephanie Ferrari, the Henry L. Smith and James L. Olson, distinguished professor at the Eschman School of Pharmacy, will share her thoughts. And then Tashani Williams, Associate Professor of the UNC School of Government, will, will talk, I think, about the west bus. So with that, I'm going to. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, we're going to actually watch a short video, and then I think Lynn is going to take the podium and, and kick it off. So, thank you.
I don't think I can quantify what this experience has meant in terms of informing me and helping me to know more about North Carolina.
I grew up in a farm here in St. Louis County.
We're touching down in 27 communities across North Carolina and seeing the impact that our incredible university has. It shows the way in which we strengthen our partnership with the citizens of North Carolina.
I will share a little with you about our tribal government now.
I tell them all the time, I say, "Look, you don't understand what this will bring. Look what it's brought today, you guys."
I feel like a lot more of a North Carolinian. Having gone on the bus tour makes me feel more like I'm part of the UNC community. It's great to meet people from other parts of the university, and it also gives me a better sense of where some of the students in our class are coming from.
When you begin to fully understand the importance of this place, and people here really understand why we're working here, why the world really needs to know about this
I hope that the bus tour participants will find new connections. I think our campus becomes enriched by this experience.
I feel re-energized. There are so many more possibilities to my work here than what I ever imagined there could be.
So that video was about outstanding Rob Holliday, who along with photographers Johnny Andrews and John Gardner went up with us on the tour, and I think they worked harder than anybody. As a result, we have these great pictures. So, thank you all for having me. I actually want to start because this reminded me of the smallest, of the biggest small world story that's ever happened on a Tar Heel bus tour. And you saw it. Kim Ramsey White, who's new here, moved from, I believe, well, she's originally from Philadelphia, ran into a gentleman on the street and started chatting with him and noted his hat. It turned out he was the father of one of her best friends who lives in England. And he had moved from Philadelphia to Scotland Neck, North Carolina. So, just saying, you never know what'll happen. But I'm delighted to be here today and have a chance to share a little bit more. You've heard from the chancellor, you've seen the video, you're going to hear probably most importantly, from two of the participants, who are going to share a little bit about their work, which, and it's one of the stops on the west and one of the stops on the east. So you actually get to experience a little bit of what the participants did. And I know that some of you all were able to join us at various points of the way, and we just, we really enjoyed having you as well. So the goals, whoops, I have this. The goals of the Tar Heel Bus Tour grow out of its purpose as a listening and learning tour. An experience for faculty to come back to Chapel Hill with ideas and connections to North Carolina and each other that will really allow them to take a look at their teaching and research and other work here and think about how it can be informed by this experience. You'll see these goals, they're pretty audacious. And at first, I thought, no way can three days. But honestly, three days makes a difference. So on, well, punch you, my thing, on Wednesday, bright and early, October 19th, we pulled out of the Friday Center and headed east and headed west. The chancellor gave us his charge, and people left with enthusiasm and anticipation and maybe a little bit of trepidation. As the chancellor said, we've traveled more than 1,000 miles with 27 stops in 24 towns in 21 counties. And you can see here, we thought it'd be interesting to see it on a map. So that was a lot of miles, and you can see that we really planned it. In some places, we had to go out a little bit and come back because we have to schedule things kind of around major, at least somewhat good roads, major highways. But I think some of the mountain roads were fun, from what I hear. And here are the towns and counties we stopped in. I'll say in putting this together that it's like a really intricate, maybe Rubik's Cube? Because, and you're trying to think about where the bus is going, you don't want people to be on the bus for too long at one time, what's close by, but you're also layering on top of that what's probably most important, some themes we want to cover. And those themes include history, culture, education, diversity, military, economic development, natural resources, and health. Oh, and also good barbecue. So, so we want to make sure that all those, as, as we're putting together, so it goes through many iterations. And what I really want to underscore is when we call people or contact people, whether it's on campus or in the community, they are always willing, and I will say eager, to help us and to figure out a way that we can get to their community or that we can feature their project. And I think the most frustrating thing is, I always say, the thing that impresses me most is how much we managed to cover in three days and how little we managed to cover in three days, when you know the magnitude of the work that goes on here. So this is actually the graphic from the dinner that the chancellor spoke about. We had a graphic facilitator there who took note of the various comments that people were making. We had a small panel discussion and, and sort of captured this visually. As chancellor, as the chancellor mentioned, he also challenged everyone to come up with one word. And so we have a word cloud here. And these are the words, as we went around and passed the microphone around the room that people noted. And I think it says a lot. We have one from 2019 as well, and I think we gave you a copy of it, chancellor, for your office. We'll add one of this one as well, because it's really important, I think, to, for people to have this opportunity and to understand what it means, both to the places we visit and to the people who come here. It could not happen without a lot of folks. And first of all, I really have to credit the chancellor. I cannot tell you how excited I was in 2019 when he said, "I think we ought to bring back the bus tour." Then he said, "I want to bring back three buses," and I wasn't as excited, but anyway. But we did it. But we decided that two might do it from, from here on. But if he had not had the commitment and vision to bring it back, it had been gone for 10 years. But it came back and came back bigger and better than ever. And so along with him, we had a committee that helped sort of fuel the ideas. And then, as I say, everybody stepped up when asked from, and on campus, even the people who, who didn't go, whether it was in finances, I got the nicest note from somebody in the council's office that had helped me with a contract with a band. You learn all sorts of things. But, and in the midst of the tour, I got a note from her saying, "I'm just thinking," she's new here, "I'm just thinking about you all. Hope the tour is going well. I'm really proud to be a part of a place that does something like this." So it has effects on other people as well. I mentioned the photographers, and then I just need to name a few folks, bear with me. Stacy Warner and Julie Truex, Linda Douglas, Will Goldsmith, Donna Osborne Adams, Jim Lutus, Mike Smith. We're all part of the leadership team. But I really can't underscore enough what my, my partner in this endeavor, I won't say crime, my partner in this endeavor, Anna Rose Medley did. We don't know exactly how we're going to function now, that we're not talking to each other about 16 times a day. But we'll manage, and we thank you all again for being with us along the way. I'm going to leave these field guides for you all as you have a chance to look through. There was one for each tour. These were created for the participants to have something not only to keep track of, but to bring back and be able to stay in touch with what they saw and learned and each other. So thank you. And I'm going to turn it over. I don't know who's coming first, Stephanie? So you can hear about a couple of the stops.
And I brought my water bottle from the Tar Heel Bus Tour, just to prove to all of you, we got some good swag also. But thank you for inviting me. I, thank you, Lynn, for the great overview. It was an honor to be part of the Tar Heel Bus Tour, and I didn't realize it was gone for 10 years. I've been with the university for 22 years, and I told people when I came back that it doesn't matter how long you've been with the university, whether you're brand new, six weeks, or someone like me who's been here 22 years, you are going to learn about the state of North Carolina and who we serve. So I just want to thank you all for the opportunity. I'm not going to share my word with you yet. I think I'm going to have you all guess my word at the end, but I think it will probably be pretty apparent based on my passion and what I do. I am a faculty in the UNC Eshelman School of Pharmacy. You are right, we don't get out of the pharmacy school building a lot. That is one thing I think I took away from this tour, is that there is a lot going on across the entire campus, across the entire system, that we sometimes lose track of because we are stuck in our offices or stuck in our buildings, focused on our teaching, research, and service. So this is a really good eye-opener to engage with not just the communities across North Carolina, but also the community of faculty that we work with here in Chapel Hill. So I want to share with you today, one of the stops we stopped at was an independent pharmacy in Scotland Neck. And of course, I was drawn to that one since I am a pharmacist. So I want to talk to you a little about the Rural Pharmacy Health Initiative and about our state and how we are a very rural state. I'll just share a little bit of background, that the stop we stopped at was one of the first sites that I engaged with in 2001, when I started as a faculty member here. I was a residency program director, I engaged with independent pharmacies, so it was really nice to go back to that pharmacy where I had been working with the father, and then I had taught the son, and now the son has taken over the business. So it was really nice to see the generational economic development within Scotland Neck, North Carolina. So I am a pharmacist. I have been a pharmacist for 25 years, and I'm going to talk to you today about the Rural Pharmacy Health Initiative that we have going on at the school, and it's one of the strategic plans of the school. It's one of the things I'm leading as our chair of our division. And the goal is to build a workforce in North Carolina that our state needs for accessible healthcare and higher quality at lower cost care. So I'm going to pause and ask all of you to think about, when you interact with a community pharmacist, what do you think of? So here's my little picture of me as a community pharmacist. I have been a pharmacist for 25 years. I have practiced in pharmacy, I've practiced in healthcare. So when you think of a community pharmacist, and I'll tell you, when I've worked in pharmacy, I've worked in a health system. So I did my training, sorry, I didn't do my training here. I did my training in Connecticut, but I did my training in Connecticut, I worked in a community-based hospital. I moved to North Carolina, I worked with a very large academic medical center, to not be named, down the road. I've worked in a national chain, I've worked in a regional chain, and I've also worked in independent pharmacies. So I have breadth and depth of different experiences that a pharmacist might have. My current role, however, my passion aligns with community pharmacy and making sure that we engage patients in the communities where they work, live, pray, and stay. So making sure that they have accessible care and lower cost care for, for the most accessible healthcare provider. I conduct, my research is implementing patient care services into community pharmacies. So I'm guessing many of you did not think about that. When you thought about a community pharmacy, you probably thought about someone who dispenses medicines, someone who calls your insurance company, someone who might counsel you when they give their medicines over the counter. Those are typically what people think about, but I'm trying to change that mindset of the public as well as of our students. So one thing you may or may not be aware of is we are the most accessible healthcare provider. Patients visit their community pharmacy 35 times per year, as opposed to visiting their primary care provider three and a half times per year. So when you talk about accessibility, we are very accessible. And I think throughout COVID, you've probably seen this in community pharmacy, if you did not know before COVID, you definitely knew throughout COVID that we provide COVID vaccines. But we provide a lot more than COVID vaccines. We do flu, we do nomococcal, we do shingles, we do Hep A, Hep B. We can do a variety of vaccinations in your community pharmacies. This happens to be one of our sites providing vaccine administration. The other thing we do with accessible care is sometimes patients can't get to the pharmacy. So we saw this also during COVID. We had a lot of people who would deliver medications to patients' homes, so that was one area. We also have mobile health screening. So this is a picture here of a mobile health screening clinic where if patients cannot drive to a pharmacy or a primary care office, we can bring mobile units to their communities. And I've done osteoporosis screenings through these mobile units, I've done peripheral artery disease, which screens for strokes, through these mobile units. I've also done medication reviews through these mobile units. So accessible care is definitely something I think about when I think about community pharmacy and rural health. The other thing I think about is lower cost, and this is something you might not think about. Here on this slide, it's also pictures of things that community pharmacists do. One is doing blood pressure monitoring, another one's doing some diabetes screenings for some sugar testing, asthma education, medication management. And probably the thing that moved me to North Carolina was something that happened in the late 90s called the Asheville Project. So if you're not familiar with the Asheville Project, it was the first nationally recognized employer-based group that worked with community pharmacists to provide lower cost care. So the employer group in Asheville, the town of Asheville, worked with the community pharmacist, and they said, "We have a tremendous healthcare costs. We're, like, our employers are just costing us so much money. We need to figure out a way to reduce our healthcare costs. Let's engage with community pharmacists." And so they did. Over one to three years, those pharmacists engaged with the employer group, and what they did is they lowered healthcare costs. Forty percent of the hospitalizations went down, so forty percent, 46% hospitalizations went down. So instead of paying for inpatient costs, that transitioned to outpatient costs. Sick time, 50% went down. That meant that, that meant that employees were showing up to work and being more productive, so they resulted in a better workforce. The overall insurance savings was $2,500 per patient per year for the health plan. Medication adherence, patients were taking their medicines, and then clinical outcomes. So patient outcomes, their diabetes got better, their blood pressure got better, their cholesterol got better, all sorts of things got better because the pharmacists were engaged. And overall, the economic value is that there was an eight to 10 return on investment when pharmacist services were engaged. So that is what's launched my research career at UNC. And so, how do we do this? How do we train our pharmacists? And many of you might be like, "Well, that's not what I see when I work in a community pharmacy." Well, that's what we're training our pharmacists to do, and that's what we need to start having them do. So we have clinical training sites across all of North Carolina. This, these little blue dots that you see on here, at any one point in time, the School of Pharmacy has 225 professional students in our communities across the state of North Carolina. We are, to brag a little bit, the number one school of pharmacy. We have been two times ranked in a row in the country, and I have worked at other universities, and this is definitely one of the better ones. So, so we are the number one school of pharmacy, not only in the United States, but also we're top five in the world. So we have partnerships across global, and, and so our students really graduate with a really high degree. It's a four-year degree, so if you might not be aware, it's a four-year professional degree. So you have to have two years of undergrad to have your prerequisites. After your prerequisites, you can apply to have a four-year professional degree. So that, and we're working to try and have early assured admissions for students graduating from high school. As long as they do their two years undergrad, then they can come in assured admissions into Carolina. So we're starting to build more of those across the state. But like I said, we do have students across the state at any point in time, and we also have the first Rural Pharmacy Health Certificate. And we also have the first Rural Pharmacy Health Certificate that has been approved in the United States. And it's been focused around Asheville. We will graduate 50 students next year. That will be our 50th student that will graduate it. But we've had such great success that we want to expand this beyond the Asheville. We want to expand this into the east and expand this into other rural communities in North Carolina. So that's the focus of what I'm going to be talking to you a little bit about. The other thing you may or may not be aware of is, if you're familiar with medicine, when you graduate from medical school, it's required that you go on to do a residency. Pharmacy school, that's not the case. In pharmacy school, it's an option. You do not have to go on to do additional postgraduate training. Nationwide, about 15% of pharmacy students do opt to go into residency training. At Carolina, 65% of our students opt to go into residency training. So not only are they trained really well for the four-year professional degree, but 65% of them go on to do additional training, which means that they are definitely well-versed to take care of patients in the communities where they live. We do have at Carolina the largest community-based residency program in the country. We have 15 sites. The second-largest has four. And we are continuing to expand. You can see some of where those sites are. Again, we span across all of North Carolina. So not only do we have students across North Carolina, but we have residents across all of North Carolina who are pharmacists. So what does this mean for, you know, the intersection of community pharmacy and rural health? So we have accessible care at lower cost. We're expanding into our rural health workforce. We train our students and residents really, really well. So we're the workforce engine for our state when it comes to pharmacy. When our students graduate, they stay. That's another great thing. They stay in North Carolina. More than 73% of our alumni live across all 100 counties. The demand for pharmacists in these rural counties is increasing. And you may, again, this is my world, so healthcare, there's going to be, there's a primary care shortage. So there's not enough primary care providers for the patients as we have our aging population. And this is where community pharmacists can help fill that gap. Over the next 10 years, we're not going to have enough primary care providers. So community pharmacists can help fill that gap because of the accessibility and the lower cost. Also, we know North Carolina is 80%. Eighty of the 100 counties are rural. So getting community pharmacists into these areas can help with that accessibility. So this is the Rural Pharmacy Rural Health Initiative that we're working on. We have three main goals that we're working on. We're working on student recruitment. So I talked to you already about the early assured admissions, trying to get students in their communities interested in pharmacy school earlier on, and then having them go back and work into those communities. So we're really focusing on student recruitment. The other thing we're working on are scholarships as well as expansion of residency. So I shared with you the residency expansion, but also scholarships. Trying to get students to have scholarships. And if they go back and work in those communities, and if they get the scholarship, that they agree to work in those rural communities for at least three years post-graduation with the intent of hopefully they'll stay. And then the way we want to do this is we're trying, we're building these rural pharmacy hubs. So on this slide, you can see those light green dots. Those are the eight hubs that we're hoping to establish over the next one to three years. And then you can see our overlapping existing residency sites and our new residency sites that we want to do. And the community pharmacists can, they already work, the research that I do, we work with primary care providers, we work with nurse practitioners, we work with outpatient health systems to help provide care for the patients and ensure continuity of care. They do a lot of chronic disease state management. So I shared with you the diabetes, the blood pressure, the cholesterol. But you might say, "Well, why is this not already happening?" Well, it's not happening because the business model doesn't match with what we need to do. Currently, community pharmacists get paid for putting a drug in a bottle. We don't get paid to educate patients. We don't get paid to call the physicians. We don't get paid to do that longitudinal care. And so that's where my research, as well as the research with this pharmacy schools, we're trying to come up with solutions, how to change the business model or influence the business model so it can be changed in the future so that our students have jobs. Just a quick story, I did work at an independent pharmacy in Nash County when I first moved to North Carolina back in 2000. Unfortunately, that store had to close its doors because the business model in which they operated could no longer keep up with that small rural community. So we're seeing more of these small rural communities having to close their doors or sell to large chains who cannot offer customized services to the patients in the communities where they live, work, pray, and stay. So that is a quick little story about, you know, my influence. Oh, my picture's not in there. Can you give me my picture? But I had a picture of the generations of the Scotland Neck pharmacist where it was the third gen, oh, there it is, yay. So Joe is the father. He's the one that I worked with 20 years ago. Thomas is a student that I trained. And we've been told that press, he would be a fifth-generation UNC grad if he were to come to Carolina. So we're already making a ploy for him to come. So it was a really wonderful opportunity. It was a great way to share with many of the bus participants what pharmacists can do, dispelled some myths, and hopefully I did some of that today. So we're really hoping to continue this work. And thank you for your time, and I'm open to any questions that you might have. Oh, yeah, what do you think my word is? Passion would be a good one. I said it so many times during my presentation. Community. Community was my word. Community was definitely my word. Again, I'm a community pharmacist at heart. UNC and Carolina is my community, and North Carolina is also our greater community. I lead that with passion, though, in my community. Is your brother Ritesh? Okay.
They're all clinical pharmacists. And my brother worked for, I think it was Anderson Health in Houston for a while, ran a couple of pharmacies. And he's here, unfortunately, he did supposedly had an offer from UNC Health, and he got one from the other one up the road. And unfortunately, he took the other one up the road. I said I'd have to disown him. But can you talk about some of these, just a little more? From what I understand, he's almost acting like a doctor. Is that sort of the modeling that we're talking about with some of these things that are going on out there?
That's a great question. So it depends, the short answer is it depends on state law. So at the federal level, pharmacists are not recognized as healthcare providers, which some would argue holds us back. I would argue that it creates more opportunity, is what I would argue. And in some states, New Mexico, they do have provider status. North Carolina, we have limited provider status, that we can prescribe with a physician's authority. But I'm not arguing that all pharmacists should prescribe. That's what physicians do. What we do is we manage medications. And we know for chronic diseases, you need medications. But the number-one reason people don't get better is their medicines are not managed correctly, or they're not taking them correctly, or they don't know how best to take them. And so I try to avoid the territorial between the physicians and the pharmacists that I don't want to take over their jobs. They are awesome at diagnosing. I don't want to do that. I want to manage. I want to manage the patients so that they stay out of the hospital, and I want to manage their medications. And all the chronic diseases that are affecting North Carolinians, stroke, heart attack, diabetes, heart failure, obstructive lung disease, those are all managed with medications. So that's the forefront of what we focus on, is really optimizing the medications for the patients. Thank you.
Good morning. So my name is Tashani Williams. I'm an assistant professor, but I think I got a raise today. And I'm actually associate professor because the slide said so, and I'm not going to argue with it. So I've been with UNC for two years. My research focuses on nonprofit management as well as nonprofit and local government relationships and community engagement. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today to talk about our stop on the West Tour, as well as the work being done by my colleagues and the work being done by the wonderful folks at the SUN project. So first, I'll orient you a little bit into the problem that is the substance use problem or epidemic in North Carolina and how it affects pregnant women. And then I'll talk a little bit about the SUN project and UNC's role. And then I'll wrap up by talking about what's next and how we can expand this research that it can help our fellow North Carolinians. So you might notice that I have a little bit of an accent because I'm originally from St. Thomas, U.S. Virgin Islands. But I've been here for over 23 years, much longer than I've been in St. Thomas. So I think I'm a North Carolinian now just with a little funny-sounding southern accent. So as I said, I'll first orient you into the opioid epidemic as it is affecting pregnant women in North Carolina. So between 1999 and 2014, the prevalence of opioid use disorder during pregnancy increased from 1.5 to 6.5 per 1,000 hospital births per year. These numbers continued to increase way above the national average. In Cabarrus County, those numbers were at 7.6 per 1,000 births. So as those numbers began to increase, Dr. Russell Suda, one of the obstetricians in Cabarrus County and the medical director for Cabarrus Health Alliance, decided to start the SUN Clinic. Essentially, when he first started practicing, just like many other physicians, he did not want to treat pregnant women dealing with substance use disorder because it required case management, and it required many different people with different specialties and that sort of thing. And it was too much for one doctor to do. And this is still the case today. So Dr. Suda began to reach out to people in his community to help address the issue in 2015. And fast forward to 2019, we now have the SUN project. So the SUN project provides compassionate care in a cross-sector collaborative for pregnant women, their children, and their families. The goal of the project was to provide, or is to provide, healthy, safe babies with their moms and to keep them safe, as well as to improve maternal and infant health outcomes. One of the things that Dr. Suda realized was that keeping the mom with the child was the best way for the mom to continue towards success. And this is also backed up by the literature. So the SUN Clinic and many other substance abuse programs realized that the solution is to treat patients by ensuring that all of the social determinants of health are met. And so that means giving them access to, or improving access and quality to education, healthcare, specifically healthcare without stigma, economic stability and housing, and as well as acceptance and support from their community. But as Dr. Suda started working with community members to provide care to patients, he realized that often the patients were overwhelmed because providers weren't collaborating well. There was no legal infrastructure to support collaboration, and it just simply wasn't working. As time moved on, the program started to, some of the providers started to collaborate some more, but it still wasn't efficient. And the patients were generally excluded, meaning that they oftentimes received conflicting information as well as duplication of services. So what you see here is a depiction of what was happening in the past, where the patient was not included in the care, providers were not collaborating right. And so the question was, how do we create a space where providers can share information and collaborate and coordinate care in real time across all sectors and have patients at the center of the information? So what you see here is the vision of the SUN project, where the providers can coordinate care and provide care to patients, having them involved. And like I said, they have recently expanded their services to offer those services to family members to ensure that the mother actually is successful. However, even with all of these things in place, the SUN project folks were still having issues with sharing information legally as well as issues with collaboration. So I introduce to you the School of Government team. So Mark Bottz and Kristi Nicodem are lawyers within the School of Government, and they helped the SUN project folks to navigate the confidentiality laws. So these confidentiality laws are in place to help protect the patients. But in this instance, it was helping to prevent coordination of care. And so my colleagues helped the SUN project folks navigate that issue. My role in the project was to lead an evaluative research project to understand how to improve outcomes for patients as well as to improve the collaborative activities. So what you see here is the structure of the SUN project. The clinical arm, which is the SUN Clinic, provides some of those wraparound services where they provide maternal care, mental health counseling, nutrition services, teaching the women how to cook, as well as how to be a parent and those sort of things, just general parenting classes. And then they have the care coordination teams. This is where my colleagues helped the magic to happen. So with these care coordination teams, all of these organizations that you see here actually meet monthly, and sometimes they even meet biweekly, to coordinate care for the patients. The governance arm operates to provide support and decision-making, especially with systemic issues, as well as advocating for policies for pregnant women that are dealing with substance use disorder. The partnership has also been expanded to Rowan County and Stanley County. So they continue to grow. So as I said, my role was this evaluative research piece where I examined the collaborative approach to the treatment of pregnant women with substance use disorder. And I conducted this research with one of our graduate students, Claire Kern. So I won't go into too much detail, but I'll talk some about the project outcomes that demonstrates their efficacy. So we conducted, we triangulated data and collected data from three different points to better understand the collaboration and to provide recommendations on how to improve outcomes. So we did interviews with patients and providers as well as accessing patient outcome data. So those project outcomes that I talked about that demonstrates their efficacy, thus far, they have treated 40 clients to date. There have been zero infant deaths, zero maternal deaths. 91.4% of women deliver at 35 weeks or more. And there is high adherence to medicated assisted treatment. And that's where they provide the women with the treatment prior to birth because, again, that increases their likelihood to succeed. And then as well, there have been high retention rates within the program, and the average gestational rate is at 38 weeks or more. And in terms of their needs, we found that the social determinant of health needs were being met at 61% or higher. And I should say that these numbers are all above national numbers. So in terms of the recommendations, again, I won't go into too deep, but the recommendations that they have already implemented from this study was improving the formalized system of care, ensuring that all of the partners were part of the decision-making processes and ensuring that there were support from leadership at each one of the agencies. They have also improved the data tracking by improving shared knowledge management, putting into place a shared knowledge management system to avoid duplication of service. And in terms of improving the program participant experience, they have ensured that the educational components are matched with that shared knowledge management so that they can adequately provide education to the patients that's in line with the services that they're receiving. One of the other things that came out of the program was a booklet that I handed around. That booklet was the result of the interviews with the patients. So what we found was that a lot of the patients had issues with signing up for service. And so we actually developed that program with their help, which was very empowering to them, and also ensured that the pamphlet was accessible. But it provides information to community members so that if they want to seek help, they know what the program is about. So what's next? So myself, Mark Bottz, and Kristi Nicodem will be co-leading a training focused on collaboration, trust-building, and confidentiality laws as they expand those services to Stanley County and Rowan County. And as well as disseminating some of the results from the project, I'll be working with Dr. Suda to continue to write on the project. And in conclusion, as well as takeaways for today, the SUN project has been able to be this successful because of the governance structure that they have in place to help support decision-making, their ability to coordinate in terms of the goals and the outcomes for the patients, as well as the trust-building that they've been working on, specifically around autonomy, because many of the agencies come to the table with different philosophies, right? So one example of that is where there was one justice-involved patient that was not showing up to her probation meetings. And the probation officer was a part of that coordination team. So instead of taking a punitive response, he worked with the partners to figure out what the issue was to help that patient instead of just sending her back to prison because she wasn't showing up for her probation meeting. she wasn't showing up for her probation meetings. So we continue to work on mutuality to ensure that there is a mutual benefit to all of the partners at the table, as well as continuing to improve that legal framework so that it meets the needs of all of the agencies. And having a memorandum of understanding in place, which is what really helps this project to work. And then of course, the money. Need to ensure that there are funds in place to support sustainable collaboration as well as ensuring that there's adequate staff to help the patients. So given the rising numbers and continued efforts to respond to the opioid epidemic across North Carolina, we hope to share these success stories and lessons learned so that other organizations can adopt these practices to help our fellow North Carolinians. So thank you very much for listening to me and I welcome any questions.
I don't have a question, but I want to thank you for your presentation and sharing what you do. I love the SUN Clinics. No judgment. I think that's wonderful, the trust and the collaboration. You really have something going there. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I would just second everything that Trustee White said. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say how much I appreciate both presentations and how director, our tour director Lynn Blanchard is such a gem. She's just such a wonderful, wonderful gift that we have here at this campus for doing all that she does.
I just want to add and echo what everyone said and how much I enjoyed Tashani getting to know you and Stephanie on the bus tour and seeing the impact that you're making in these communities. And I like what you said, Tashani, is that is you figure out how this works in these communities and then there's a proliferation of that out and beyond so that it can have a greater impact. So thanks for all that you do to allow us to uphold that responsibility that I talked about earlier that we have to the people of North Carolina. So thank you.
Thank you.
Some great examples of why we do what we do. I'm going to call on Vice Chair of the Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure Committee, Trustee Marty Cottis for a report from that committee quickly. And then following his report, I'm going to, I intend to take a break and feel free to come up and get some cake if you want. And then we'll have a 10, 10, 15 minute or so break after your report. Thank you, Trustee Cottis.
Thanks Chair Bowlin. Fellow trustees, this report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee of Budget, Finance, and Infrastructure yesterday. The committee approved the transfer to the University of the Endowment's distribution from the investment fund, as well as voted to accept the annual endowment fund from report from Mr. Jonathan King, CEO of UNC Management Company. Committee also reviewed and approved one designer selection, one property acquisition by lease, one request for advanced planning spending authority. It also reviewed and approved tuition and fee change proposals for submission to the Board of Governors. All of these items were voted on this morning as part of the consent agenda. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks. One question though, on the consent agenda, did we have the tuition and fee in there? Because I don't remember seeing it in here. I just want to make sure we didn't miss it. And if we need to vote on it, then we may need to vote on it.
I don't see it in what I listed, so I would entertain a motion to approve the tuition and fees for the university. I have a motion and a second. Motion by Trustee Patel, second by Trustee Davis. Any further discussion on that? It was a pretty comprehensive report and if we're approving it twice, I don't think that's a problem. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed, thank you. I don't know the setup on the cake, but we're all adults, you can figure out how to get a piece, I'm sure. Feel free to get a piece, I'll put us in recess for about 15 minutes. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, so I'll call us back into session. I had talked to Stan Ahal earlier this morning, the new dean of data science. I think Stan probably, maybe he's back to work today, gone. But I had wanted to, one of the things I actually learned and remember learning at Carolina, you know, a lot of things you remember, little things from class. I took an intro to statistics class and I think the first day they played the birthday game of, where statistically, if there's 57 people in the room, two people will share the same birthday at a 99% probability. And so I found out that Penny Gordon Larson and I do actually share a birthday. So happy birthday to you.
Are we doing cake in between?
Yeah, we're just going, we keep going all day, right? Penny and I'll be at the bar for beers after, it's five o'clock somewhere, right? There you go. All right, great. So I'm sorry to bring everybody back and then go into closed session. Before we do that though, I do want to remind everyone that, and this is something that I've done since I've been, had the honor of sitting here, and that is reminding everyone why we go into closed session. We go into closed session to deal with personnel and legal matters. And then pursuant to open meetings law, we'll come back and take action in public on most of those items, the ones that we can, we'll do that in open session. So do I have a, I'll call on Secretary, Mr. Turner, do you have a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move that the board convene in closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, and also pursuant to Section 143-318.11A2, A3, A5, A6, and A7.
Have a motion and I have a second from Trustee Davis. And I also want to welcome Vice Chair Pryor to the room. Welcome, sir. I know you've had a busy morning with business. So any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll clear the room except for those necessary. Thank you. And we will come back into open session following closed.
Yesterday's open session meeting of the Committee on External Relations in open session, the committee heard a legislative update from Amy McConaughey, Director of State Affairs, and Kelly Dockham, Director of Legislative Affairs. The committee also welcomed the new chair and vice chair of the Board of Visitors, Jesse Kurton and Jane Ellison. Thank you. This concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Chair McCullin. I'll call on Vice Chair of the University Affairs Committee, Teresa Artis Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chairman Bowlin and Board of Trustee members, this report covers items discussed during the meeting of the Committee on University Affairs yesterday, November 9th, 2022. The committee considered and approved revisions to the university's non-salary and deferred compensation policy to create a bonus program for employees as well as approved revised hourly salary ranges for the School of Social Work. In addition, the committee heard an informational update on the Economic Development and Innovation District from Michelle Bowles, Chief Innovation Officer and Executive Director of Innovate Carolina, Cheryl Waddell, Director of Economic Development and Innovation Hubs, and by video, Doug Rothwell, Chair of the Economic Development Council and Co-Chair of the Downtown Together Task Force. Committee also heard an update from Bubba Cunningham, Athletic Director, and Michelle Brown, Assistant Provost and Director of Academic Support Programs for Student Athletes regarding the UNC Systems Intercollegiate Athletics Report. In closed session, we discussed requested personnel action items, including two promotions conferring tenure and two new appointments conferring tenure. These items require our vote now. So on behalf of the committee, I move that the Board of Trustees vote to approve the requested final personnel action items, including two promotions conferring tenure and two new appointments conferring tenure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This concludes my remarks.
Or do I have a second? I have a second from Trustee Davis. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. That matter passes. The personnel matters voted on in open session will be made available. And Carolyn, those are made available? They'll be available shortly on the website?
Yes.
Yeah, on the website. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make my motion about my 105-year-old neighbor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. McCullin, you are exactly right. I do have a request from Trustee McCullin.
If members of the board will remember last, at our last meeting, I passed out a newspaper article about my wonderful Samsonian neighbor, George Williams, who's recently celebrated his 105th birthday. I understand he is almost the oldest alumni, I think one is two or three months older, but I don't know who that is. And he is still very active, very alert, and until two years ago played golf every day, but a dog jumped on him and broke his wrist, so now he's in rehab. The chancellor called him on his birthday and he was so appreciative of it, the chancellor's got him a gift that I'm going to deliver. And I would appreciate it if the board would approve a motion, a resolution that we can give him in the newspaper he really wants to run. And any changes you want to make is fine. But I move that the Board of Trustees of the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill express its sincere appreciation to Mr. George Williams of Clinton for his decades of support for the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill and for his decades of being an avid Tar Heel fan.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Chair.
And he will appreciate it.
Chair McCullin, and I would ask the Assistant Secretary of the Board to have that drawn up in some nice font and have that delivered either to Mr. Williams or to Trustee McCullin for his delivery to Mr. Williams.
If you can get it to me, what I'll do is, the newspaper wants to be in on the deal. I can have them there when we do it.
Yeah, and you can have it, present it to him.
Right, right.
That'd be great.
Rather than just sending it to him through the mail.
Great. Thank you, Trustee McCullin, Chair McCullin.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
For members.
All right. I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Got a second? All right. We're adjourned by acclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. This paper? You won't miss one.